If everybody would like to take their seats, we're going to go ahead and start. My name is Karen Smith, and I am president of Revere Council PTAs, which is comprised of our four school PTAs. And I'd like to welcome you to this evening's Revere School Board candidate night. I would also like to ask that people silence their cell phones so that they're not ringing during the program. In just a moment, I'm going to turn this evening's program over to Barbara Hunsinger. She's a member of the League of Women Voters Akron area who will be serving as our moderator for tonight's event. First, however, I'd like to explain the basic format for our forum. Each candidate will have up to two minutes to present opening remarks. Candidates will then address questions from the audience. Each individual candidate will be allowed up to two minutes per question. Our members have been distributing forms for you to write your questions on. If you didn't get a form, they're in the back of the room where you can raise your hand and ask for one of the forms. Also, we'll ask you to raise your hand if you have a form to be collected and brought up to the screeners table. The forms will then be given to representatives of the League of Women Voters and the Revere Council PTAs, who will screen them for duplication and to make sure they're general in nature and not directed to a specific individual. The screened questions will then be given to the moderator, who will address them to the candidates. At the conclusion of the question segment, each candidate will be allowed up to two minutes for closing comments. Now, I'd like to turn the program over to Barbara, who will introduce the other representatives from the League of Women Voters who are helping tonight, and then she'll introduce the candidates, and we'll get started. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Barbara Hunsinger, our moderator for this evening. And we are, as you know, holding this event as a partnership between the Revere Council of PTA volunteers and the League of Women Voters of the Akron area. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization, which means we don't support candidates or political parties. We can, however, take positions on issues when they can be based on league position. Okay, this is the interest group. The work that the League does is made possible by member dues and donations and the dedication of League volunteers. If you're not a member, we encourage you to join. We invite you to join. By going to the national website, lvw.org, you can register for all three levels of membership for national, state, and local. Today is the first day of early voting. Please note that the Summit County Board of Elections has recently moved to 1050 Thomas Avenue in Akron, about 10 minutes from its previous location in downtown Akron. On the literature table outside, you can pick up voter registration cards and vote by mail applications. Additionally, palm cards that explain what school boards do and don't are a helpful synopsis for the school board duties that you could take with you and pass on. The League's online voter guide, along with other important election information, can also be found at vote411.org. And this gives you the responses from candidates who answered the League questions and their demographics. So, Karen, come over here. Sorry. Okay, we have four candidates tonight. And in alphabetical order, they are Keith, Jeff Boler, Jennifer Burke, Hayden Hydoo, thank you, and Keith Malick. Okay, Karen has mentioned this already, but be sure when you want to submit questions to write them and hand them to somebody who will be circulating here. Okay. And this... We are going to start, I'm done here, with opening remarks from each candidate. And the way that the questioning will be done is we will start with the first, second, third, and fourth. And then for the next question, the second, third, and fourth, and then first will be in order. So it's going to be a rotation basis. So we can now begin with the two-minute opening for by each candidate. And Keith Malick, you are invited to speak.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. I'd like to begin by thanking the Revere Council of PTAs, League of Women Voters, and the Revere Local Schools for organizing and hosting this important event. For those that I haven't yet had the pleasure of meeting, my name is Keith Malick. I currently serve as the president of the Revere Board of Education. It's been an honor to serve this community for over seven years, and I'm proud to be running for reelection on November 4th. My family and I chose Revere for the same reasons many of you did. Because the district represents the best of what public education can offer: strong schools, strong families, and a strong sense of community. My wife Ashley and I live here with my son Rogan, an eighth grader at the middle school, and our youngest Luke, who just turned four and already calls himself a future Minutemen. Professionally, I've spent the last seven and a half years as chief legal counsel for a real estate title insurance company, following a 25-year legal career that's included work as a Summit County Assistant Prosecutor, corporate attorney, and litigator in private practice. I was raised to give back and lead by example, which is why I first ran for school board. In addition to serving as board president for the past 25 years, I've coached in the Revere Baseball Softball Association, served on the Revere Schools Foundation, and currently sit on the Akron Bar Association Board and serve as vice chair to the Summit County Children's Services Board. Under our leadership, Revere ranks in the top 5% of all school districts. We've expanded AP and college credit courses, approved student support services for our special needs, live-on-floor and IEP plan students, and achieved a 100% graduation rate, all without asking taxpayers for new operating living in 14 years. We've also made safety a top priority by adding a second school resource officer and upgrading building security. I'm running for reelection because I believe in accountability, integrity, and making sure every student has the opportunity to succeed. Thank you for your time and for your continued support.
If you would hold your applause until the end, that will help us expedite the questions here. Okay, now it's for Hayden Hydoo.
That stinks for me because I don't get any, but I'm just kidding. Good evening, everyone. My name is Hayden Hydoo, and I'm proud to be a lifelong member of the Revere community and a graduate of the class of 1991. For more than 20 years, I've volunteered in the district, coaching, fundraising, and serving because I believe deeply in what makes Revere special: our tradition of excellence, our strong community, and our commitment to every student's success. My wife Jennifer serves on the Revere Booster Club, and I have four children who have all grown up in this district. My daughter Hadley, a 2024 graduate, attends the Honors Nursing College at the University of Akron. And my boys Davis, Brady, and Carter are active in sports, and they participate in the Fellowship of Christian Athletes. I am seeking reelection to continue building on what we've accomplished over the past five years. In 2020, we navigated COVID better than most districts and were in national recognition for keeping students in the classroom and learning on track. Since then, we've made common sense decisions, strengthening security from the school bus to the classroom, adding active threat response training, another school resource officer, bullet-resistant window film, and active shooter training for all staff. Security continues to be one of our top priorities. We've also focused on improving parent communication, maintaining fiscal responsibility, and hiring and retaining the best teachers in the state. Revere continues to be recognized as a top 25, five-star school district in Ohio with a 100% graduation rate. My focus has always been on doing what's best for our students, staff, and community. If reelected, I'll continue to make thoughtful, practical decisions and help every student thrive and keep Revere a district we're all proud to call home.
Thank you. Now, Jennifer Burke.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jennifer Burke. I'd like to thank the Revere Council of PTAs and the League of Women Voters for organizing this evening and Revere for hosting this event. I graduated from Revere in 1989, and I was absolutely well-prepared to go head into college. One of the first things, I realized how strong my education at Revere was when I sat my first calculus class, actually, at Grove City College. I earned a bachelor's degree in mathematics there and leveraged that into a job in insurance. And I've been in insurance for over 30 years. As far as my family, I've been married to my husband Tom for 22 years. We have three children. Nora and Lillian are juniors, and Henry is in eighth grade. When we moved here, we knew that we wanted to live in Revere in this district because I knew the quality of the education I had gotten here. And I launched right into volunteering, first for the Richfield PTA, then for the Bath PTA, then for an organization called Breathe, which focused on mental health, self-regulation, resiliency, and grit in our students and staff. In 2022, Revere Schools Foundation absorbed Breathe, and in 2023, I joined the Board of Revere Schools Foundation, and I'm finishing up my third year on that board. In 2023, the Revere School Board appointed me to the Kaihoga Valley Career Center Board and then appointed me to a four-year term at the end of that year. And I have been elected vice president of that board. I'm serving in that role this year. And for the last two years, I've been the chair of the Policy Committee. My why is why I'm running is because I was raised to believe in civic engagement and informing ourselves about what we are voting for and being involved in our communities. And I desperately, I really, really want to serve my district. As you can see from my volunteer experience, that's just where my heart is. I believe that I have experienced uniquely suited for a board role through my leadership roles in my career and my extensive background in policy. I love Revere, and as I said earlier, we chose this district because of its excellence, and I want to continue that for the next generation of Minutemen.
Hi, everyone. First of all, I have enormous respect for any voter who takes the time to be educated on the people that represent their voices. So thank you all for being here. Keith Hayden and Jennifer, I also want to thank the three of you. Public service is a calling in a time when issues are polarizing. It takes courage and sacrifice to serve. My origin story dates back 75 years to the 1950s when my family moved to the district. Eleven of my relatives have gone through the Revere school system, including my parents who met at Bath Elementary. I graduated from Revere in 2000, went on to play college basketball, and then after living and working in Cleveland for 10 years and Washington DC for six, my wife Sandra and I moved back to the community in 2022. My three boys will be third-generation Minutemen. We have a very real and profound appreciation and love for Revere, and that's why I'm here today. I was a sports executive for 15 years where I gained invaluable experience in building organizational culture. I negotiated high-stakes contracts, seven-figure corporate partnership deals, and even complex collective bargaining agreements. I recruited players, hired coaches, launched and built five expansion franchises from the ground up and built out entire business operations. But what I'm most proud of from my time in sports was my opportunity to lead, to bring people together from all different backgrounds and build belief in one another. I've built a 15-year career in sports by leading with integrity, honesty, hard work, grit, and a positive attitude. I've been a part of winning five championships in the NBA, the NHL, the WNBA, the American Hockey League, and the Arena Football League, so I know what the formula for a winning culture in an organization looks like. Not my professional life consists of owning a small family business and trying to build a legacy that I can pass down to future generations. All these experiences give me extraordinary confidence that I can meet the challenge of being a member of the Revere School Board. Revere is an incredible district of world-class teachers and administrators. But we're not perfect, and while I always believe in celebrating our accomplishments, I think we also need to have robust conversations about areas we can improve or build upon. I'm a family man that cares deeply not only about the experience my kids have at Revere, but all the kids in our district. I will work hard for every single one of them and all of you as well. Thank you.
Ready to begin the questions. Candidates, what is your position on how and when topics related to gender identity and sexual orientation should be introduced in the K-12 curriculum? And what role do you believe parents should play in shaping that content? And I won't repeat this with anybody. Okay, okay, again. What is your position on how and when topics related to gender identity and sexual orientation should be introduced in the K-12 curriculum? And what role do you believe parents should play in shaping that content?
So... I don't believe that it should be brought into the school at an early age, like at the elementary level. I think that... I know that in middle school, we have conversations about sexual ed. And I know that we talk to students about preventative measures. I feel like, for me personally, I think that those are conversations that you have at home with your child. But I don't think that those conversations should be treated any differently than the normal conversations that we would have as far as sexual education in probably the middle school level. Can you repeat the last part of that question?
What role do you believe parents should play in shaping the content?
Well... I don't think parents... Are you talking about the content as far as curriculum?
Curriculum, yes. Gender identity and sexual orientation.
Well, most of our curriculum is in shape by our parents. So I would say I don't think... I think parents can have conversations, and I think we should be open to having conversations. But I don't know how I feel about parents shaping curriculum for kids in school because we've never done that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer?
So I really don't know because I'm not an expert in curriculum or education or what we should be teaching kids at certain ages. I just know what my kids bring home and what they're learning. What I do know is that Marsha Roach is an incredible curriculum director. She is on top of what the state law says about what we are required to teach, what we aren't required to teach. And I would trust her implicitly in what her recommendations would be to the board in terms of curriculum that we would need to present. I think that gender identity and sexual identity, all of those are very sensitive, difficult topics. I believe parents should have the freedom to determine whether or not they want to opt their child out of that curriculum. And I know that we do that at various levels. I've gotten at least three notices this year already of sensitive content that my child would be seeing, and I have the option to excuse them from that content. In terms of the role of parents in shaping content, I agree with Mr. Hydoo that we are a public school, and we pay, our taxpayers go to pay toward hiring strong, smart people in our central office to help form those decisions, and our teachers who can help review that curriculum and form those decisions. Thank you.
Yes, so Jenny stole my thunder there. But I was taught very early on by a mentor, somebody who's very important to me, to know what you don't know. And I am not an expert in curriculum either, and I think it's important to know how your board members will function when they are on the board. When there is a topic or something that I am not an expert in, I will seek out experts and people who know a lot more than I do. And I think that's really important, to be open-minded and to seek out people who have far more experience and knowledge on particular topics. Marsha is fantastic. Everybody I've talked to in the district has high things to say, high marks to say about what Marsha does from a curriculum standpoint. So anytime we're talking about curriculum, the first place you go to is our curriculum director, our teachers, the people who are on the ground, who are doing the work every single day. So that's the first place that you go when you seek out their counsel and you make decisions based on what is best for all of our kids in our schools. Secondly, and I think this is also important, just to know who I am as a person. I will be an advocate for all kids in our schools. Every parent and every kid's journey is different. And no matter what they are going through as a board member, I will be there to support them in whatever ways that I can. And I think it's important that all of you know that about how I will function as a board member.
And fourth, Keith Malick?
Thank you. Number one, we have to stay focused on what schools are here to do. Educate students, uphold high standards, and prepare young people for the real world. Not push ideology or force communities to abandon their values. When it comes to topics like this, identity, sexuality, age-appropriateness is most important. There is no room for this to occur at Richfield or at Bath. Fifth grade is when our students first start to learn about the birds and the bees. And sexuality is confusing enough for young boys and girls to understand the difference between boys and girls. If I introduced that earlier, I think it would just cause confusion. As I think Jennifer said, we do have a wonderful curriculum director in Marsha Roach. She is extremely involved in making sure that we are following state-specific guidelines and ensuring that all our students are receiving age-appropriate type of education. As far as parents and their involvement, you know, parents don't have the expertise on curriculum. That's why, and for that matter, Board of Education, unless we have an education background, really don't have expertise when it comes to curriculum. We have to rely on the experts to direct us as to how and when, from an age-appropriate standpoint, that should be introduced. And it wouldn't come from parents.
Yep. And the next question, starting with Jennifer Burke. If elected, what is a priority area of focus for you? And at least one actionable item that you will promote to support this area? Again, if elected, what is a priority area of focus for you? And at least one actionable item that you will promote to support this area?
Yeah, if elected, I've got a couple of priority items, absolutely. So some of the areas that are close to my heart, where I think that we have opportunity at Revere, are definitely improving our special education, what we provide to those families and how we help those out, looking at those expenses. I think mental health is very important. I've been incredibly transparent about that. I believe that there's an opportunity to help our students learn how to self-regulate, create some self-awareness, lead to better collaboration, active listening. At a much younger age, I think that there's an opportunity for that. In terms of as a board member, because board members have essentially two roles: setting policy and hiring, firing, evaluating the treasurer and the superintendent, our policies need an overhaul. I don't know the last time that they had a thorough overhaul and review, and I think it's time. I think there's a lot of inconsistencies in there that are ripe for improvement. And then the second one is, we've had a strategic plan now for five years. It's grown a little stale. We don't hear much about it anymore. Probably time to seek a look at a new five-year strategic plan. And I'd love to implement what they do at CPCC, which is a rolling strategic plan, meaning every year, one year rolls off, and the next year rolls on. So you always have a five-year view of what you want the district to look like.
Yeah, so I think we all, I think, understand how different and difficult a time it is for our kids in the world our kids are growing up right now. Things are polarized. Our politicians are making things polarize. And it's also an era of 24/7, cellphone in your hand, social media, which has created a completely different set of challenges for parents and for kids. And I think everyone would agree that mental health is something that we need to continue to focus on, providing robust services, making sure that we have enough counselors and mental health specialists. Counselors are not mental health specialists necessarily, and vice versa, and making sure that we have enough resources in every single building to tackle these individual and unique challenges. So that's a big one, and I think everybody is on board with that. One of the things, the actionable items, and as I've been out knocking on doors and talking to people in the community, and as our role in creating policy, one of the things that I want to make sure that I do, and what I've heard from voters, is that when there is large-scale policy that's being created, implemented, and proposed, to make sure that I am making proactive community outreach. And when there is something that could fundamentally change the experience of a Revere student and how we all interact and how our schools function, I think in good faith, the board must reach out and talk to the community about those things and reach out for solutions, answers, ideas, and have an open dialogue about those policies before they are passed.
So I think that, from my perspective, one of the things that we as a district can work on is creating one Revere. I think we're really good at being great at Richfield, great at Bath, great at the middle school, and great at the high school. But one thing that we really need to work on is creating one Revere. And by doing that, we ensure that when a student enters kindergarten, that the stuff that they're being taught and learning will carry over into Bath, and the same into the middle school and to the high school. When you create a community-level type of environment in the district, I think it reflects good on our students as they try to navigate their story. We're always trying to figure out a way to ensure that they're successful once they get through Revere. And one of the best ways to do that is to understand their story. Each of our students has different stories. And I think we can start, obviously, when they're at the early age, but to keep building on that as they grow. One particular element that I think that we can do better as a district is the physical wellness of our kids, especially in middle school. When they come from Bath and they go to the middle school, they lose out on that recess. And I think that recess gives them that opportunity to exert some energy, some pent-up energy that they may have, and it eliminates stress. And the fact that they no longer have that, I think, only adds to their stress because we all know that teenage life brings with it all new concepts and all new feelings for these young girls and boys. So I think I know my plan would be to try to work on a much recessed middle school.
All great answers. Yeah, I think a couple of things for me. I think one of the things, we've revamped our administrative team. So I think it seems like over the past few months, we've become very proactive in our approach and not as reactive. I think we're doing a much better job of looking at our data across the board, from, you know, our special ed to our IEP to our pre-K, all the way up to our high school, getting teachers with mentors, using teachers, putting them in accountability groups. So I think data feedback is really important. I'm not one that wants to make change just for the sake of change. I think we make change because we need change. But two areas of focus for me also would be having a recess at the middle school, or one of the few middle schools that doesn't have a recess. I think those kids need to get out and just run around for a little while. And then one of the things, and a lot of the feedback that I've heard from the students, is a strength and conditioning class that you're able to take in high school. And for some kids, that could be lifting weights. For some kids, that could be running on a treadmill. And when it's nice out, for some kids, that could be just going and walking on the treadmill. And when it's nice out, for some kids, that could be just going and walking on the track. But just getting out and getting some physical fitness, getting away from like the everyday kind of classroom, I think, stress that goes along with being in the school. I think that does take care of part of the mental health exercise, very good for that. And then finally, we are addressing the mental health issues. We have, our superintendent has tasked a group, and we've gone to our principals and our vice principals. And we'll be coming back with a recommendation on how we can support our mental health and things that we can do to help support those kids, which we do have a lot that are struggling with anxiety and mental health issues.
Jeff Burke? I'm sorry, you can watch, right? I'm sorry. So from March of 2023 through January 2025, our district has spent nearly $500,000 on legal fees, including several lawsuits, a significant increase compared to previous years. What steps would you recommend the board take to ensure legal spending returns to a more reasonable, sustainable level?
So the first thing that I would want to do is reinstate a policy committee. And to have two members of the board dedicated to reviewing, constantly reviewing, current policy and proposed policy. That was something that went away, I believe, last year. And I think it's a really important piece to have back in place. To make sure that we have eyeballs on that policy that we currently have. Big-time policy that's being presented, so that we have people that are constantly focused on it. The other thing, as I already talked about, is I think that policy creation is an enormous part of what our role as a board member. And I think when you're talking about fundamental policy that changes our experience for our kids at Revere, the administrators and the teachers, I think we have to be able to reach out to the community and have conversations. We are not all experts in every area. We have to talk to consultants and experts in those areas. But we also have to talk to the people that elected us and put us in these positions. And because there are a lot of smart people in our community and a lot of people with really good ideas that could help us ensure that when we have policy, that the state mandates that we pass, like the RTRI policy, that we slow down, we ask the right questions, we talk to all the right people, we talk to the community, and we pass policy in a timely fashion, but not until we slow down and make sure that it's the right policy, it's put together properly.
So I think I may have missed the question. I thought the question had to do with legal fees and that policy. Can you repeat the question?
Yes. From March of 2023 through January 2025, our district has spent nearly $500,000 on legal fees, including several lawsuits, a significant increase compared to previous years. What steps would you recommend the board take to ensure legal spending returns to a more reasonable, sustainable level?
I'll answer the question, as you indicated. As it relates to legal fees, we're in a litigious society. And we can't obviously determine when we might get sued. But I can tell you that we use several law firms to ensure that we protect our district. Prior to, about a year and a half ago, we internally handled all public records requests. But unfortunately, when the release time for religious education came around and the anti-like-wise group, we were inundated with public records requests. And it became overwhelming for our treasurer and our IT department to handle that. And we had to outsource that to a law firm. And we would get multiple requests daily. It'd be lucky sometimes that we got a request once a month, if that. And as a result, attorneys don't charge you $5 an hour. They charge you hundreds of dollars an hour, and that adds up. And I'm not sure the point of all the records requests. But as a public entity, we have to satisfy them. And as a result, you know, it cost us as a district a lot of money. I don't know what the results were from all those public records requests, because there were thousands upon thousands of pages that were requested. Additionally, we occasionally do get sued. There is an individual that has sued hundreds of districts throughout the state. His name is Brian Ames. And there's no real basis to his lawsuit other than to collect money. Unfortunately, we have to defend ourselves.
Yeah, I think just to piggyback on what Keith was saying, I was going to bring that up too. I don't think, before the release time for religious instruction, I do believe that Rick Verdin had handled all of our, all of those requests himself. And I think that we were so inundated with those that we had to outsource Squire, Patton &amp; Boggs. I also know that for some of these lawsuits that we've had to pay, we have an insurance company. So we paid an insurance fee, and the insurance company has actually settled those. So what looks like it might have been $500,000 on our end, I think it was more like $30,000. I'm sure if you have questions, you can contact Rick Verdin. I don't know the exact numbers on those. But I do know that our insurance company handles a lot of those. But we had a case years ago where we would win a case, and then they would sue, and we would win a case. And then finally, a family ended up settling with them. So like Keith said, some of these things are litigious, and some of them go, you know, some years they're up and some years they're down. I will tell you that our legal fees and what we average spending per year are the same as Copley, Hudson, Wadsworth, Twinsburg, North Wilton. And I believe that's anywhere between $70,000 and $150,000 a year, just depending on what's going on in your district. Thank you.
So I will agree that we do live in a very litigious society, and there has been quite the uptick in public records requests over the last two years. But I think as a board member, there's a couple of areas that I want to make sure that I'm paying attention to and focusing on to avoid the need for bringing attorneys in. And that's knowing and understanding how meetings should operate, open meeting laws, how the board should act, overreach of a board, those types of things. Ames is the bane of just about every school district in the state of Ohio, and we're no exception. I think also, you know, self-serving on policy. There are multiple different organizations that we could go to to assist us with writing policy language. And Revere doesn't use them, we use a law firm. So I would like to understand why we don't use OSBA, or Neola, or one of those other firms to assist us with that policy writing language, and what kind of savings we'd be able to see from that. And then I echo what Mr. Bowler said in terms of a policy committee and self-serving in that regard, and involving community members in that as well. I think I'd be disingenuous if I didn't also say that acknowledge the fact that there were two contract buyouts over the last two years. And that really speaks to leadership and hiring and making sure you have the best people in the role. And that goes all the way up to the board and making sure that we have the best leadership that makes really solid decisions for hiring.
Okay. Next question. This has been touched on by a few people. Many parents and students have expressed concern about student mental health and lack of support available at Revere. How would you, as a board member, respond to and assist families who feel that their needs have not been met? And what steps would you take to establish trust across the district? I will repeat it. Many parents and students have expressed concern about student mental health and the lack of support available at Revere. How would you, as a board member, respond to and assist families feel that their needs have not been met? And what steps you would take to establish trust across the district?
Social-emotional learning is one of those areas where intention and implementation don't always align. While I do support helping develop life skills and healthy emotional awareness, our schools first and foremost should focus on academic excellence, with core class time being devoted to protecting that rigorous instruction that our students have to go and prepare for as they prepare themselves for careers, college, and life. I believe that any SEL programming should be based on real documented needs through assessments and in collaboration with our parents. Families deserve to be informed. They need to be involved in what's being taught to their children. And especially when it touches on the values and beliefs in mental health. I think there's a misconception out there that schools are here to also be mental health educators. And that's not really what we're here for. We're here to identify when there's issues. And if a student needs support, there should absolutely be those resources available. But they should be targeted, and they should be age-appropriate and parent-reformative. Topics like mental health wellness could and should be addressed in health class in a clear, constructive way, not move it into unrelated academic content. And I think that by doing that, you know, we are making sure that it's need-based. And we do assessments. When we start to get into teaching, for instance, Tier One to everybody, you know, it kind of eludes itself.
Yeah, I'm a, just from past experience, I'm a, I understand mental health, it touches me. I think when you talk about social and emotional learning, I think it's hard because I think our teachers have a full plate of things they have to do. I think our counselors are counselors, and I think they're able to talk to people, but they're also trying to guide them through core classes, getting into college. And I think we've really tried to be intentional on how we can help our counselors in ways that we can help. We've gone to our principals and our vice principals, and they've said we needed Tier Two help. And that's what we requested. We've brought in some outside organizations that have talked about, you know, being a mentor to kids. And the principal said that wasn't the right move for them, so we've kind of moved away from that. I think it's very hard, because I explain it like, you know, if I get injured at a sport and I go to my trainer, she diagnoses me with something's wrong with my knee, but then I have to go see a doctor to get it fixed. And I think it's hard when you're dealing with these things, because the school is only capable of doing so much. And then sometimes our kids need experts in that field that can help them. So I always want to be an advocate. What are we doing? I think taking away cell phones was a great thing to help with mental health. I think adding in time where kids can walk around and get exercise is a great thing that we can do. I think the SOS class that we do for the middle school, I think all those things are added values. But when it comes to real social and emotional learning, sometimes the school is not capable or doesn't have the resources and they're able to handle it. But what we've done is, we've tried to leverage groups that we can trust, where you can take your kids there, and you can have real conversations with them. Because, you know, the school can't be everything to everyone, right? And it's too bad that it can't, but that's just not how it's set up. Thank you.
I am one of those families. And I remember how the staff at Revere came around me and came around my family in those moments of crisis and helped us figure that out. And I also remember feeling very guilty. And I felt guilty because I was taking them away from all of the other families that were experiencing the same thing that my family was. Now, my family is a Tier Three family. If you're not familiar with the tiers, Tier One is education for everyone. Tier Two is a tiny bit of intervention to get them back to, you know, on level with everyone. And Tier Three, those are kids that have intensive needs. And so at Revere, what we are really doing is we're putting out fires with our Tier Three families, understaffed, overworked counselors, overworked central office in this regard. So I don't feel personally we've appropriately looked at the needs that we have around mental health and wellness in our district and taken a close look. When I went to the OSBA conference last year, I attended every single section I could that dealt with this. And I was shocked at the number of schools with less resources, smaller than Revere, had a wellness coordinator on staff who really helped out with this and looked across all of the buildings and understood what each building needed. I would push back that if social-emotional learning wasn't supposed to be part of a public school curriculum, why does DEW have an entire set of competencies around it available for schools to use should they choose to educate to it? I get it, we are very, very busy teaching our kids other things. But if we can't teach them how to just simply sit still in a classroom and function and get through the day with everything else that they're trying to process, what are they really going to learn in those classes?
Yeah, I think there were some really good things there. And I hit on some of this already with making sure that we are taking approach in all of our buildings, that there are enough resources there to identify these problems early and make sure that we are working with our kids on the issues that they're facing with being on cell phones and bullying and things like that. We had a young lady who came to a board meeting last year, and she kind of, amazing honesty in front of a group of people. I think she was in seventh or eighth grade. And she talked about her story and having severe depression, what she was going through, and maybe not feeling like she had that support system that she needed at the middle school. And I think it's just taking an approach of, are we doing enough? We see how many of these issues, these devastating issues that are happening across our country in our schools, the school shootings. And oftentimes, there are kids that have gone to that school or are going to those schools. And could those problems have been identified if they had more robust mental health services at those schools? I don't know, but I know that we need to make sure we're doing everything that we can to prevent anything like that from ever happening at Revere. I also wholeheartedly believe in a holistic approach to education. I think all of us would agree, our mental health is not just about education. It's about exercise and the food we put into our bodies and not being on our phones 24/7. And how we interact with people and looking people in the eyes and having conversations. I think the cell phone policy they put into place at the high school seems to be doing really good things with kids having conversations again. I think we need to continue to take steps like that, where we look at a holistic approach to education and not just what they're learning in the classroom, but how do you take care of yourself? How do you take care of your mental health so that you can avoid these problems? And when there is an issue that comes up, you know where to go, and there is somebody there that you are comfortable going to have these conversations with.
On to our next question. How should school board members conduct themselves on social media?
Well, I'm not on social media, so I think that gives you the right answer. I mean, I don't.
That's an answer.
I mean, I don't respond, I don't say anything, you know. I think it's very tricky, so I don't think, you know, I think school, I think you have to be very careful of anything that you say on social media, because it's, you know, it can be taken in the wrong way. So when I got on the board, I might know something about the Ojai Buckeyes or, you know. But otherwise, as far as if you look down my list of, you know, Facebook or, I mean, I'm not really a Twitter guy or anything, but I've sort of just eliminated Facebook in general. So for me, it's, I've just stayed out, and thank you.
This was a question I was asked by the board members who interviewed me when I was seeking appointment to the Kaia Valley Career Center Board. The question was, what do you think the role of social media is for a board member, you know, posting on behalf of the school? And there really isn't. I think we all have the right to have our own personal private pages where we share information and share memories and interact. But in terms of talking about the school, the school board, board actions, those types of things, that's why we have a communications specialist to take care of communicating out for the school. I don't believe any board business belongs on social media from a board member.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think the social media for me is a big part of where we are in the world. I believe there is so much misinformation. I believe there is so much misinformation and so much vile behavior and mistruths and disinformation and bullying and attacking others and polarizing issues being used to manipulate us. And I just think it's a place, a dangerous place. If it were up to me, the world would take a break from social media for a year. And I honestly think we would be better off. We would start talking to each other again in the community, with our neighbors, with our family members who we may disagree with. But generally speaking, I think board issues and issues that have to deal with our schools on an official basis should not be done on our personal social media pages. But generally speaking, when you're in a position of leadership, you should be exemptifying that leadership in every aspect of your life. And you should be showing the community that who they elected is someone that they can trust, has integrity, and is somebody they believe in to make the right decisions for those students at the school.
Social media is dangerous. It is. I think I'm the only person on this pier who doesn't have a Facebook page for my reelection campaign. I think one of the things as a board member that you need to remember is that you have no expectation of privacy when you're posting, whether it's on your personal page or we don't really have access to anything the district posts. But you have to anticipate that anything that you post is going to be read by members of the community. And in doing so, you're creating potential emotional hard feelings for yourself and anybody else that might be attached to the social media post. And you might cause people within the community that have different opinions to have discussion amongst themselves regarding posts. I think it's a very fine line that you have to be careful with when you post certain things on social media. My thirteen-year-old doesn't have any social media accounts. And I don't anticipate him getting any time soon. When he asks about them or we talk about them, we talk about teaching moments. And from his perspective, we talk about texting. And even though that's not social media, it's still something that you can kind of tie into social media. And how certain texts or maybe photos that you share might have a negative reaction. So you have to anticipate and know that a reaction might, will have a reaction. You have to be very careful. But by all means, as a board member, use discretion with things that you post.
At this, at this point, we, we're going to take a break. You did, you gave your answer right. Yes, you did. We're going to take a short break, and I, by short, people need to stretch their legs and move around a little bit for a few minutes. So we will reconvene back here in seven minutes. Candidates, you would return to your seats. Candidates, please return to your seats. Okay, we're going to reconvene. I know. Okay. Kind of forgotten where we were. Next question. The number one minority group is the disabled. The district has made positive changes since the arrival of Mr. White. What opportunities would you champion for this population? Again, the number one minority group is the disabled. The district has made positive changes since the arrival of Mr. White. What opportunities would you champion for this population? Jennifer?
Yeah, thank you. That's a, that's a great question. I wish I was closer to the special education programs that we have here. One of the things that I have espoused number and number of times is that I want to represent every family, every child, every student, and make sure that they have the opportunity to pursue their path to success and to thrive. And I believe, especially when it comes to our children with disabilities, no two children are alike. Every child is going to have their unique aspects, their strengths, their areas where they need to grow. And whatever way that we can support them, whether it's through intensive needs aides, whether it's including them within the classroom, whether it's, you know, including them in some classrooms and then pulling them out for intervention at other places, I would love to be able to provide that for every single student that we have. I think the other important thing is that our families feel supported and heard. And, you know, to that end, making sure that we are up to date on all of our 504 and IEP programs, that those meetings are happening on time, that those parents show up and feel like the people at those meetings see their child, understand their child, and know what their children need.
Okay, this is one where I have to know what I don't know. My child, my oldest of my three, just entered the school system this year, and I frankly don't know enough about this topic on what we, what we're doing really well and what we don't, what we're not doing well and what we can improve on. This is another area that I would lean on our current administrators and teachers who would know much more than I do exactly where our weaknesses are, where our strengths are. I think with any family, just like I've talked about with everything else, a holistic approach. Extracurriculars are important for every child, no matter what their challenges are, whatever their strengths and weaknesses are. Ensuring that we have robust programs that support every single child, no matter whether they're a top achiever, or they're a kid that needs extra help, or they're one of our disabled students. So I think that's an area that I need to learn more about candidly, but I also would rely on the people who are in our buildings every day, who are working with those students. And as Jennifer said, obviously, reaching out and being proactive with the parents who know their child better than anybody and can probably provide some pretty solid ideas on things that we could be doing better and concentrate on areas that we're also doing very well.
One of the things that as a board that we've been doing is listening to our special education families. And when we, after Dr. Teff left, and we were searching for a new supervisor, one of our focuses was on special education. And Mr. White had a background in special education. So it was obviously a positive to bring him along, knowing that one of his priorities is to work on bettering Revere as it relates to that population within our district. Additionally, we recently promoted Bill Conley to Student Services. And he as well has a background with special education. And our newest operations director, Nikki Campbell, comes to us with extensive special education background. So having three individuals at our central office with backgrounds in special education will only help as we continue to try to ensure that our special needs kiddos get the attention that they need. One of the other things that, probably not surprisingly, is that our preschool attendance has increased dramatically. We do peer mentor preschool, where we have one-on-one with the special needs and a traditional student at that preschool level. And our teachers that are teaching preschool and the education background that they have is absolutely amazing to address our special needs.
Yeah, so I'll just kind of continue where Keith was ongoing. But since bringing over Bill Conley and Nikki Campbell, we've started dialogue where we've done parent communication. So Nikki and Bill have had ongoing conversation with parents, getting feedback and trying to improve support. So one of the things we're talking about is parent mentor through the ECS. That holds both the school and the parents accountable. We now have training and professional development focusing on consistent training for special ed, special ed aides, including crisis intervention. We actually have a five-star rating for gap closing in our special ed, which is the highest you can have. Also, areas of growth we've talked about, you know, one area is, one of the areas where we're told that we needed to grow was in our feedback and conversations with parents. So we were not being very proactive in our special ed, our special ed group. We weren't dealing with parents very well, so we made the necessary changes. We're now really looking at how we're giving critical feedback, you know, that we're being supportive when we talk to our parents. And we're also allowing them input. And then just to say, or go past what Keith said, the state ratio allows one to sixteen students per case load. We're at about nine. So we've expanded our Tier One instruction for all students with special needs. And we're very proud of that five-star rating in our gap closing, which not a lot of districts have, but we do.
Thank you. Next question. There are maybe hundreds of alumni of Revere that have stayed or come home to raise families. How are you going to bring the community back together? And those, and there seems to be a divide currently in the community. There are many, maybe hundreds of alumni of Revere that have stayed or come home to raise families. How are you going to bring the community back together? As there seems to be a divide within the community.
Yeah, so this is tough. Our world is divided. And for someone who is an optimistic person and a positive person who grew up here, it's tough to come home and see neighbors not be able to have discussions or invite each other over for dinner on Saturday night or talk about what's happening in the world without it being divisive or without there being vitriol. And I think that whether it's alumni or anybody else in our community, I think that simply starts with being able to have open and honest conversations, looking each other in the eyes again, and talking about what's happening in our lives, what's happening in the world. We all, at the end of the day, are part of this community, and we all want the same things. We want safety for our kids. We want to be unified. We want to have a positive experience living here. We want to enjoy it. Life is short, and we spend our lives fighting with each other over issues that these politicians in Columbus and in Washington DC are geniuses at manipulating us to be fearful of, to fight with each other about. We waste our lives, and we waste the opportunity to spend meaningful time with our neighbors and people who had an amazing experience at Revere together. And I think maybe those are community events to bring people together more often and alumni together more often. But I think it just starts with being able to sit down and have honest conversations with each other about, and listening, being curious about why people look at the world the way that they do instead of being judgmental. So I was taught to listen, to understand, and not to listen to respond, to listen to what people are telling you, and be a good listener. And that's the key to communication, and I think communication can solve a lot of the divisiveness that we're seeing.
Thank you.
I think it's telling that we have hundreds of alumni that come back to Revere. I think that shows the respect that our alumni have, not only for Revere but for the community. It's tough in today's society to expect people not to allow outside leaves, influences to affect their daily lives. Everybody has different opinions, everybody has different beliefs. And to expect everybody to have the same ones makes it difficult. I think the biggest key is, you know, showing each other respect, understanding that you do have differences. Don't force your beliefs on everybody else. And if somebody does disagree with you, don't bring hate. I've seen so much hate at some of our recent board meetings, and it's disheartening. Because, you know, from a board member's perspective, we're trying to do what's best for the community. We're trying to do what's best for the district and for the school. We have a really great campus here and with wonderful teachers, wonderful administrators, and talented students. And, you know, obviously, none of us up here can control anybody else's happiness. Obviously, people have to start looking within. And there's divide, and it's national. It's not just within Revere. And unfortunately, when you have a national divide, you're bound to have community divide. But for the most part, when you go to the football game on Friday night, you see a community that comes together to celebrate and to enjoy the game. I don't see, you know, people not communicating with people that have opposite opinions. In fact, I've witnessed and experienced just the opposite. So I think maybe it comes down to the individual problems I'm still.
Yeah, so Jen and all three of us grew up at Revere, right? We're all alumni. We moved back here for a reason. I've got to be honest, there's no divide with me. I mean, I can tell you from sitting up here, the people I've reached out to, I have missed a mark on a few people. I have someone in conversation tonight who approached me. But if you call me, if you have a problem with me, I will call you back. I will talk to you, and I will walk away with no resentment or anger. My kids, when I talk to my kids about what's going on in school, I just asked my son yesterday, he said he's in our class and there's some kids in the, I think, LGBTQ plus community. And he said, "We get along great. We have no problems." He goes, "They're super funny." My son was telling me the other day that we had a German exchange student, and two of them were sitting in the cafeteria by themselves. And three people went over and befriended them, and now there's like twenty people hanging out with them, and they're going out on the weekends. If you come to my house on a Friday night, you'll see Indian kids, African-American kids, you know, kids that are Muslim, any faith, anybody's welcome at my home. I'm not going to judge you by what you did before you got there. I'm going to judge you by what you do when you get there. And if you do something stupid, I'm going to have to probably ask you to leave. But I don't garner any bad will towards anyone. I'm willing to have an open discussion, and if you feel differently than I do, I'm okay with that. I'm comfortable in my faith and how I feel. I'm comfortable in what I believe in. But if you feel differently, I'm okay with that. And I think those discussions are awesome for our community. I think it's the way that we allow ourselves to grow. And lastly, I will say this, I think there's a way bigger problem with the parents outside of the community than... of the community than there are with the kids inside our schools. I think that they get along pretty well and I think they can see the forest and the trees. And I think we've allowed our differences probably to get further along in the discussions that we can have. But inside of our schools, I think our kids do a very good job of supporting each other.
Yeah, I'm going to agree with you. And I've been having a lot of conversations with my kids about how kids treat each other in school and what they talk about and so forth. And then, I mean, it's school, right? And they're teenagers and of course, they're going to have their complex. But they are much more open and accepting of each other's differences and each other's points of views than what I've seen sometimes here in our community. It's been rough. And I think for anyone who disagrees with me or what I think or what I have to say, I would love to sit down and have a conversation with them. I think that's the first point is that face-to-face contact and the really, for me to show up with an open mind and an open heart and ready to be curious and to learn and to understand the point of view that that person is coming from. I think that when it comes to sitting on the Board of Education, if I'm a member of the audience, I want to hear what my thoughts, concerns, everything are being spoken at that board level. And I want to hear that they have heard me and that they understand what my concerns are, what my fears are, what I worry about, what I want to see for our community. But here's the thing, at the end of the day, going back to the question about how can we bring the community back together? We have such an amazing school and such an amazing community. And at the end of the day, that's what we need to rally around is that we are really raising fantastic, wonderful people to go on and to do fantastic and wonderful things.
Next question. Historically, school board positions have been nonpartisan. However, they are becoming more politically charged each year. What will you do to ensure that you equitably represent families and students across the political spectrum in the most neutral and beneficial way? I will repeat that. Historically, school board positions have been nonpartisan. However, they have become more politically charged each year. What will you do to ensure that you equitably represent families and students across the political spectrum in the most neutral and beneficial way?
That is a good question. One that deserves a thoughtful answer. I'm proud of the values that I believe in, fiscal responsibility, accountability, strong commitment to family and community. But when it comes to our schools, I don't lean through a political lens. I lean through the community lens. And our job as a board is to serve every student, every family, every educator, regardless of their political affiliation. That's exactly what I've done over the past seven years and will continue to do if reelected. We've accomplished some amazing things during the past seven years. And they weren't because of a political agenda. They were because we have excellent administrators, wonderful staff of teachers, and talented students with exceptional families behind them. And they also come from collaboration, common sense, and a shared commitment to excellence that we have here at Revere. Leadership does mean listening to your community. It means respecting diverse perspectives and doing what's right for students, not what is politically convenient. We are still partisan, or nonpartisan here as board members. But we also, we do have our own personal beliefs. But what we try to do is to make sure that those personal beliefs don't come into play when we make decisions here as board members. We have a deep desire to see our students succeed and have a commitment to keeping our schools strong and thriving.
Yeah, I don't think politics really plays a role in the board's decision. I mean, I've heard multiple comments about the policies that we write or writing policy. I mean, you know, do we write policy? Yes, but most of that policy comes from the state. I mean, Jeff brought up the cell phone policy. We didn't create that policy. The state created that policy. You know, we use a third-party law firm that, you know, kind of gives us the lingo. As Rick Perdine says, we try to Reverize the policy. So it's, but at the end of the day, if we go out and create a policy that's, you know, that is singular to us, that isn't state mandated, that is something significant, we're liable for a lawsuit as it is. So when policies come down, we might change some of the lingo or some very minor things. But really, we, you know, we don't write policies. So when people say it's getting political, I don't think there's a lot of room for politics when it comes to policies. And I think, you know, for me, I've always been a board member. It's my job to oversee and not interfere. So I hired a superintendent. You know, we have Rick Perdine who controls our finances, Dan White who is our superintendent. And they have an administrative team. And our job is to just oversee what they're doing. But if I have some special agenda or something that I want to get done, there's four other board members that are going to see through that. So for me, it's never politics. You're looking at the whole student and what's best for Revere, what's best for the school. And I've always just looked at it along those lines is what's best for our community, what's best for the school. And then also, you know, parents have a right, right? I don't want teachers being the moral compass for my kids. Parents have a right to be parents and we want our teachers to teach. And I think, you know, sometimes that line gets tricky, but for me, that's where it is. You think of the student and community first. Parents have their rights and they need to be parents and teachers need to teach our kids.
Okay, next.
I was terrified when there was a line item slipped into the budget bill this year that would have required candidates for boards of education to declare a political party on the ballot and then also run in a primary and then run for election in the fall because that would only further divide our local governments. I don't believe that any political affiliation or anything belongs in local government because we are local, right? We're not Republicans or Democrats or independents or anything when we're talking about every single family in a public school. I, the position I took on this was that if I affiliate or if I accept endorsement or if I accept money from one political party, I'm essentially closing myself off from listening to somebody who might see differently. And I want to hear everybody's story. I want to understand where everybody's coming from. I want to understand what's important to everyone. And if I declare that I am one thing or another, then how am I being open and open to the opportunity of learning something new or learning a different perspective? So in terms of serving in the most neutral and beneficial way, I mean, we're all going to bring our own experiences and our own biases to the board, but that's why I really want to see some balance. And I want to see a variety of experiences and viewpoints on the board so that we, every community member feels like they are heard.
So hopefully you've seen that I'm a fairly transparent person. I want you all to really know who you're voting for, who I am as a person. My personal beliefs, ideologies, political affiliations, beliefs are completely irrelevant when it comes to being a board member. I am completely disgusted and disenfranchised by both political parties in this country. And it is part of why I thought it was so important for me to do this and to try and serve my community here. I think we have a massive deficit of leadership in the country and this world of people who are really serving for the right reasons, for the majority of the people that elected them and put their faith in them, went to that ballot box and put their name down because they thought that person could make their life a little better, could make their child's life better, could be better for the future of our country. I think we need people who care more about, they are selfless and care more about the people that elected them than they do about themselves and their own personal and political beliefs. There's no business, they have no place in a school or election in my mind. And then when it comes to policy and things that the state puts forth, laws and policies that our school is required to adopt, law is not policy and policy is not law. The state of Ohio might pass a law and we have to pass a policy. But as a board, our responsibility is to make sure that that policy is right for our schools and that we adapt it to what is right for our kids, our administrators, and our teachers. So what I will do as a board member, I will be objective. I don't, my political beliefs are completely irrelevant when it comes to evaluating policy and evaluating what my role is as a member of the board. And I will do it in a way that I think is best serving all of you who hopefully will vote for us on November 4th and make sure that I do right by our kids.
Next question. What kinds of books, literature, and curriculums do you deem inappropriate for K through 12 schools and libraries? What kinds of books, literature, and curriculums do you deem inappropriate for K through 12 schools and libraries?
Well, I'm a parent at Revere and I'm on the school board, but I think this sort of covers the same thing we talked about earlier. We have a director of curriculum who looks at, you know, our curriculum and books. You're talking about, you know, books that are in our library or books that children can check out. I mean, you know, we have certain policy around that. But I don't, I don't overstep my boundaries as a board member or a parent. So, you know, I, once again, I think anything that's sexually explicit to younger kids or in that matter, that are, you know, in the high school or in the Revere system at all, I really don't understand that. I don't, you know, I think there's things that are appropriate for kids that are teenagers and there are things that are appropriate for kids that are kindergartners. But I think there are also things that aren't appropriate for any of them. And that's, you know, those are adult-type things that I don't think a public school should be allowing, you know, kids to have access to. But I also trust our superintendent and our director of curriculum and our admin team to make sure that they're doing a good job at that.
Yeah, I agree with you. And I do not have the education background experience to deem anything appropriate or inappropriate for anybody's child. I think that that responsibility lies squarely with Marsha Roach, again, amazing, and librarians in our schools to determine what is age-appropriate and what is beneficial for whatever curriculum is being taught in the grade levels in those buildings. I grew up in the Richfield Library. I spent hours and hours and hours there every summer and I loved it. And what I loved about it was that I could explore and learn and find out anything I wanted to in that library. And I want our kids to have that same experience. On the flip side, in terms of who I think is best to deem books appropriate or inappropriate for children are the parents. And I love the fact that our parents have the opportunity to exclude their children from taking out certain books or looking at certain books in the library. But I want those books to be available for the parents that it's okay for them, for their kids to review them. Yeah, I think that's essentially it. I fully support our librarians and their decision-making in this regard.
Yeah, I don't really have a lot to add on top of what was said already. But I'll tell you this, the lesson I learned harshly at times in my former life in sports and when you're, as a leader, your job is to find, hire, and empower the people that work for you and trust them wholly. And our school is really, really good at finding amazingly talented teachers and administrators who are really good at their job. And I think we have to place trust in them and allow them to do what is best for the kids because nobody knows them more intimately than they do. And so as a board member, I would trust in our superintendent to put people in the position to make the right decisions for our kids because that's what they were hired to do. And you have to empower them and not micromanage them, allow them to do their jobs.
So age-appropriate is the key here as well as we need to have oversight by our administrators to ensure that individual teachers aren't offering specific ideologies to young elementary school kids without parent knowledge or without parent involvement. You know, we do have to be careful as teachers and as administrators to respect family values, family beliefs when we're teaching our youngsters. I don't think it's appropriate for individual teachers to perhaps go against the grain and introduce certain materials that other teachers within that same grade level are doing. I think that you have to ensure that parents are aware of what is being introduced and taught to their kids, especially to our younger families and younger kids. So my wrong, age-appropriate is most important as well as ensuring that our administrative team is aware of the books, the literature that is being made available to our students.
Next question. How should bullying be addressed?
Yeah, that's a really good question, to be stopped. I think I have been surprised by the creativity and the level of bullying that I have heard about in our schools. It's a little disheartening sometimes. I want to, I do want to go back and say, I do still strongly believe that our kids are getting it right in terms of getting along with each other and accepting each other for their differences and so forth. But there are definitely some bullying situations that happen. I know we have an anti-bullying policy that might need to be strengthened. I think that what I have seen with the phone calls I've gotten from administrators letting me know of incidents that I have been really impressed with how our building principals and administrators handle the bullying incidents that come to their attention. They are on top of it and they are nonjudgmental and they are kind and they are discreet. And they are right there, willing to help those families and those students kind of navigate through what they're seeing. It's going to be really, really difficult to stamp out every effort of bullying, but what I'd like to get to a point of is where the kids stop tolerating it, right? And we empower them to be able to speak up for their fellow students and, you know, call out children who maybe make poor decisions.
Yeah, again, on this one, I don't think I'm integrated into the schools enough yet to make a fair judgment on what policies and programs we have that are working or not working or need to be improved. Obviously, I think you have to have some policies in place. You have to have awareness in the schools that it won't be tolerated. And ultimately, it's a partnership between the schools and the parents. And the way that I personally feel about bullying is that it starts at home in the behavior that the parents model. I believe strongly in leadership and showing kids the right way, the kindness and respect and empathy and compassion. I was raised by my parents to be kind, first and foremost, above anything else. And it's the number-one guiding principle, it's the North Star of how I live my life. And every day that my kids go into this school, before I drop them off or when I pick them up, I either tell them, "Please be a leader today," or "Were you a leader today?" Sometimes they are, sometimes they aren't. But that's what I want them to know. I want to model the behavior that I want them to see. And I think that's where it starts. Our kids are watching everything that we're doing. They watch what we do on social media. They watch how we treat each other. They watch how we have discussions out in the community when things are difficult. And if we model the right behavior on how to treat each other, I think that does not eliminate bullying. Of course, kids are going to be kids in certain circumstances. But I think if kids have the right example of all of us, not just their parents, but all of us in the community, and how we treat each other, I think we can, that'll go a long ways in helping some of the bullying issues we're seeing. bullying issues we're seeing.
So I think obviously all kids are susceptible to bullying. Even your large, big athletes can be bullied. You know, it's, we do have a policy that is in place. I think bullying has been around for many, many years and having adopted our policies back in the day, but we do have them now. And for the most part, our administrators do a great job, as well as our teachers, to ensure that at least during the school day, bullying isn't at least limited and hopefully not occurring. One of the big reasons, in my mind, for passing the cell phone policy, what we did was to ensure that we take that away from students during the day because texting, social media, advice that our kids are using and sending videos or photos during the day, signaling out fellow classmates. Hopefully, we were able to eliminate that, especially at the high school level with our new cell phone policy. You know, I can tell you from my own personal experience, my son was bullied twice, once in kindergarten and once in sixth grade. The one in kindergarten happened before I was a board member. I won't share with you what I, how I told him how to handle it. But then in sixth grade, I, he actually told me about it and I took the time to call the parent of the child that was bullying my son. We had a great conversation. He actually felt really bad about it, had a talk with his kid and his kid came and apologized to Rogan. But the point here is making sure you communicate with your children and with other kids. Thanks, buddy.
Yeah, so I have this rule that I think Jeff, you might have thought sounded like you're not allowed to be bullied in my house, so you're not going to get bullied and you're not allowed to see anybody get bullied. But I only say that because if my kids are being bullied, number one, go have a conversation with that person. And if you can't, take it to an administrator, come home and talk to me and I'll talk to their parent, but, but we're not going to let some, another person make you feel a certain way about yourself. And then if you ever see anyone getting bullied, you need to be the first one there to defend them. And I do think my, my boys do a pretty good job of that. There's some times I want to strangle their necks, but I think with that piece, they do a pretty good job. You know, and I do agree with Jeff, I think a lot of this starts at home. You know, when, when my kids are involved in anything where even if, even if they're not involved, but they're in a crowd or they're doing something wrong, they're going to be punished. And I do think that, I, it feels like the culture is shifting, but I do hope that our kids understand that like, it's okay to like be a leader and stick up for the kids that can't stick up for themselves. I think some of that comes with them volunteering and getting service hours. I think we have a great group of kids that want to volunteer for, with our special ed kids and help them out. You know, but I do hope that our kids understand that like, you know, sticking up for the kids that can't stick up for themselves is really a great way to build a culture. And I can tell you, I've seen it with just having a daughter and then coaching middle school football. It's very different. Boys can tease each other and it's kind of left alone, but with my daughter, there were some things where it's like, you know, it just seems to dig a little deeper. So I do hope parents are talking about this with their kids at home and I do hope that kids at Revere continue to try to stick up for people that can't stick up for themselves because I think that's one great way to build culture.
Well, that concludes our question and answer period. And we're going to move on to the candidate closing statements. Each one has two minutes to do their closing statement and then we'll continue. I do want to thank everyone, all the volunteers who have been here and, and I'm sorry we couldn't get to all the questions. We tried to make them balanced and representative and next time we'll do a mini for three hours. What do you think? Skinning. Okay. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Jeffrey to do his, to begin the closing statements.
Yes.
So thank you all again for being here and to all the candidates. This is genuinely my favorite part of the campaign process is getting to have conversations with the people that live in the community, my neighbors, and let you get to know who I am as a person. And as, as we've gone through this process and there's been some negativity on the community forums, I have begged and pleaded with people to please come and see me and meet me and find out my heart and who I am as a person and my background. And don't listen to things you've heard, listen to me and what I'm saying to you and I think you'll find out that I'm somebody that you would be proud of to be on this board. I am living my dream. I am living in my hometown. I have a big family. I have an unbelievable support system, my wife Sandra. And the best thing about voting for me and for me being on board is that she don't just get me, you get my wife who is far smarter and more talented and is the reason I am who I am. She has supported all of my ambitions and reinventing myself on multiple occasions and she is an incredible human being. In addition to that, being raised by incredible human beings, my grandparents, my parents. And I am just a person in Revere that wants to make a difference. I have a family that I want to have an experience in Revere like I have to enjoy and be, have a fulfilling life here and to go on, and I say this all the time as I'm out in the world and it's not hyperbole. I want to help create world changers at our school and create kids in an environment where our kids can go out and do better than we did and put our, put our world in a situation where we aren't so divided, it's not so visceral, where we are just neighbors and friends and we help each other and we have fun together and we raise amazing families and we go out and we make the world a better place every single day. I'd be very proud to serve all of you and my alma mater. Thank you very much.
I am motivated to serve on the Revere School Board because I believe every child deserves a safe, supportive and challenging learning environment that prepares them for their path to success and sets them up to thrive. I'm a proud Revere alumna, I'm a parent of Revere students, and that gives me a deep connection to our schools and to the personal stake in their future. I have attended over 120 board meetings since 2020, which has given me insight into the challenges and the opportunities that are facing our district. I believe my priorities are going to include ensuring data-driven decisions to support all students, maintaining safe, modern facilities, strengthening communication and collaboration with our families, and being a responsible steward of taxpayer resources. And I believe that focusing on student success, fiscal responsibility and community engagement, I will absolutely work to keep Revere strong now and in the future. And I hope I can vote for it on November 4th. Thank you.
Thank you everyone for coming out. Thank you candidates for being here. In closing, if you want a board member who truly cares about the whole student from the classroom to the stage to the playing field, someone who believes every student can thrive, then I ask for your support. I want every student to have success, meaningful learning, learning opportunities, whether it's in the classroom or through programs like Gaiola Valley Career Center. Every child deserves the support they need to succeed while at Revere and to be prepared for life after Revere. I'll continue to make sure that we build on our success, but never rest on our morals. There's always room for improvement. Being a proud member of the Revere community means celebrating what makes us great while embracing common sense change that helps us grow together. It's more than just being an advocate. It's that we have a proven record. We've done things in this community. We've upheld the standard that you expect from a board since I've been here the last five years. And the last thing I'll say is if you want someone who's going to go out and work the streets, know the kids in the community, be willing to have open conversations with you and dialogue, that's who I am. When our kids graduate every year, I know almost every single graduate coming through because I've dealt with them face-to-face, coached them for going to a sporting event. So for me, it's more about just sitting in a chair and going to meetings. It's about actually being in the community, being positive, doing something about it, getting to really know our kids, getting to love on our kids and being able to support our kids. Thank you.
Thank you everyone for coming and taking part in this event tonight. As we look ahead, I want to leave you with this thought. Revere is a great district, but like any winning team or community, it's not perfect. We've made tremendous progress together. Academic excellence, student safety, fiscal responsibility, but the work isn't done. That's why I keep thinking about the New England Patriots. Not because our logos are the same or similar, but for the following. For years, they were the gold standard in the NFL, consistent Super Bowl contenders with two leaders who knew how to deliver results, Bill Belichick and Tom Brady. Then the team decided to part ways with both of them and suddenly, what had been a championship team fell to the bottom of the league. Revere's not a football team, but the lesson applies. When you have proven, steady leadership that understands the community and has a track record of success, it makes sense to stay the course. Changing leaders just for the sake of change can put everything we've worked so hard for at risk. I've been honored to serve as a board member and currently as your board president through challenging times, including guiding our schools safely through the COVID pandemic while focusing on matters, on things that matter most, academic achievement, student safety and responsible stewardship of your tax dollars. So tonight, I ask you to stay the course with proven leadership. Together, we can keep Revere strong, safe and successful, not just for today, but for the future of every student and family in this community. Thank you for your trust, your support, and most importantly, for your vote for Keith Malick on November 4th. Let's keep Revere great.
On behalf of the Revere Council PTAs, I'd like to thank all of you for taking time to attend tonight and learn about the Revere School Board candidates, what their positions are on the issues that are important to you. We are recording tonight's event and will be posting it within a few days and will share the link through our PTAs and via social media. Also, wanted to let you know if you didn't already, there are two more local candidate nights scheduled which you might like to attend. One is sponsored by the Bath Homeowners Association. It'll be on Thursday, October 16th from 6:30 to 8:30 PM in the Bath Church Fellowship Hall. The other is sponsored by the Richfield Civic Organization and is being held on Tuesday, October 28th, 7 to 9 PM at the Richfield Designer Hall. I'd also like to thank the League of Women Voter Representatives who assisted us, as well as our PTA members who volunteered their time to help out tonight. Enjoy the rest of your evening and please be sure to vote on November 4th. Thank you.[1794.23][1794.23]